All right, well, we'll call the meeting to order. Um Heather, do you want to hit the recording for the Zoom?
We got two of Heather.
Oh, we do. You are muted Heather, by the way.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, that's odd. I was kicked out and now I'm back and. Double.
Uh let's your your.
Recording in progress.
There we go. Okay. Um, well, let's go ahead and get started. We'll call the meeting to order. I know we will have a few more folks that pop on. Um, and but we've got enough folks to do the meeting right now. So let's go ahead and get started. Um Heather, could you help us with the roll call? And we just have to remember to say. Uh, name and where you are located.
Sure. Councilmember Briggs.
Here in Ann Arbor.
Steven Borgstorf.
Uh here in Ann Arbor.
Jennifer Cornell.
She will be late, but she will be there, she said.
Alan Heber.
Here in Ann Arbor briefly.
Sarah Hammersman. I'm here. Jeffrey Henney.
Here in Ann Arbor.
Rita Mitchell.
Here in Ann Arbor.
Ellis Ralph. Frank Wilhelm.
Here in Ann Arbor.
And Adam Zemke.
Here in Ann Arbor.
Okay, great.
Um, and um, could we have a motion to approve the agenda? It was posted on Legisstar.
What is the agenda?
Uh, sorry, Alan.
What is the agenda?
It is just to review comments and approve comments to be sent to the Parks Department on the pros plan. That's it.
So I move to to approve.
Thank you. And second, Senator Briggs, um, all right, uh, all in favor of approving the agenda as written, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Um, next approval or no, next is public comment. Um. Uh Heather, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak?
We don't see any hands up at the moment.
Okay. Right. Uh, in that case, we're going to go right into discussion of the pros plan. Um, at our last meeting, we uh, we said that we would like to have feedback provided uh, in the, in about five or seven days after the meeting. Um, around the pros plan uh, and comments uh, so that we could hold a special meeting if we uh, if we deem necessary and. And work uh, offline uh, around um, creating some recommendations. Um, there were a couple of folks who um, had some recommendations. They uh, wanted to be submitted and. Uh, I worked Rita spearheaded the effort uh, along with Alice and I uh, to work heavily on um, on working on some of those uh, comments. Uh Heather, could you send Alice the meeting link?
Sure.
Okay, she just emailed me. Thanks. And so uh, the result of that, I'm going to pull up today for for uh, discussion. And so I have a copy of the pros plan as well. Um, and um, we tried to keep this um, both in a uh, formative and constructive light. And also tried to be um, really as sort of brief in the areas as possible. There are a number of areas that uh, that were highlighted. And so. Um, let me go ahead and do that. Can everybody see my screen?
Yep, yep.
Okay. So um, this is a document here. Um, and I will uh, I will put uh, this link. I can't put it in the chat, actually. Um, we will, Heather, could you email the uh, or in fact, I will do it. Let's do this here. We will uh, get you a copy of this. Hold on one second. Sorry, computer is. Enjoying the spinning wheel. All right. Okay, all right. So um. So uh, right here is the uh, the uh, document uh, that hi- highlights a few uh, changes or several changes to the pros plan. Um, based on the recommendations uh, and the feedback that we were that uh, we collected. Um. And we started Rita, I don't know, we started working on this probably well over a week ago, probably 10 days ago now. Um, and. Um, it is pretty substantial. Um, and so um. So I'll just go through and I'm going to try and highlight areas of the pros plan where we, where we suggest these things. And Rita. Um, please feel free to chime in um, as well, and I'll try and be brief here. So. This first section is related to just the geographic boundaries area of the document. This is on page one. Highlights the uh, the area, uh, the central area, which is the central business district. That's the, the, the section we're dealing with here. Um, and you know, uh, there's some prior pros plans. That uh, that um, were written and reference um, ratios. Uh, of population to acreage of uh, park space. And. In several of the documents, pros plans, uh, 2016 and 2020 are examples of this. Uh, there, there is a breakdown. Per uh, planning region or planning area. And that is not in this document. And um, it really does help. Indicate um, some of the uh, some of the differences between park space um, in different areas of the city. And so we thought that was an important recommendation. And we have the, both of the comments here uh, are pertaining to that. And I think for uh, for uh, to move things along, what I'll do is I'll just go, there's three pages. So I'll go through the first page and then stop and and we can talk through any questions. Um, so uh, the next areas, section C and page uh, two. And uh, this area deals with the social characteristics of planning areas. And uh, really the, the comment uh, is uh, is similar to. Uh, the first, the first uh, section. It's just a continuation. This is a chart in the section. Um, so it's population density changes per planning area. So similar, similar concept, just a different area of the document. Next section is on page 19. Advance here. All right, uh, so page 19, uh, there is. Uh, there's a section dealing with the um, advisory boards. And uh, we have a, a piece of this. Uh, there is a uh, let's see here. Kemp House Board Council comments right here. Um, and uh, it was thought that it'd be a good idea just to include the boundaries uh, of the uh. Center of the city block um, and enumerate those boundaries. And so we just put those. Put those in here. Fifth Avenue, William Division and Liberty Streets, uh, including the parcels that are, that are referenced. Um, so just sort of a clarity thing. Um, especially since this is the first time that this area is introduced in the document. We thought that would make uh, sense um, to, to enumerate it here. We don't enumerate it. Um, elsewhere. So um, section B on page 30. Answering that. So this is uh, urban parks and plazas. This is a, there, there are several areas of this section that deal with types of um. Parks that uh, that the Parks Department manages. Um, and there, in this section, there are some descriptions. Um, around uh, around uh, you know, parks in the urban areas or plazas. There's a fairly substantial amount of detail on the plaza portion here. And so we, we uh, uh, thought that some greater enumeration around um, the differences. Uh, of uh, types of space that fall into this classification. So basically, a little more detail around uh, around the uh, the types of spaces. There are a couple of examples in the, in the bottom section uh, of that, you know, including Liberty Plaza, Sculpture Park and Forsyth Park. And I think um, I think our thought was, you know, just enumerating, there are some differences here um, would be, would be helpful. Uh, the next one, uh, and I'll stop after this one is on page 63. This document is uh, really expansive. Um, so kudos to all of the, the staff um, for putting this together. Because I have a whole new respect for this planning document. In doing so. So uh, on page 63, uh, there is an alternative. There's a, this is a section that deals with acquiring property. There's actually several sections that deal with acquiring property here. Um, and there is uh, this uh, this one is sub-headed as alternative methods. And we thought that um, the, the one method of not acquiring property or of acquiring property that is not listed here is the um, method by which. Uh, the center of the city um, block was created, which is the ballot uh, initiative method. And so uh, we thought it was important to uh, just provide a little clarity. Um, that designation of land for park use via ballot proposal uh, is also one that has happened in the city. And so I'll stop there for a second. Um, because the next section has got a few recommendations and just see. Pause briefly and see if there's any questions around this first, first page of recommendations. Okay, hearing none. Sounds good.
I think I, I think I do. I just want to make sure I understand the proposals. So there's the. There's the table at the beginning of section A that in prior pros plans has columns for the different planning areas. Where you can see the, the population density and the uh, park acreage by those planning areas. And the proposal is to put that, I guess, put those additional columns back in the table.
Yes, yeah, that's, or, or at least the data that's in the columns. Um.
Oh. Okay. Um, just fine with that. I just want to make sure I understood that. And then the, the last point about. Land acquisition. I just want to make sure that we're being precise because proposal A didn't acquire any land. It designated public land as parkland. So are these other methods more directed to the acquisition of land in the first place? Or is it kind of an? You know, an oval peg for a round hole if it's, if it's designating already existing public land. I guess. No, I think about it's probably okay to include it because uh, it's taking. Land for whatever purpose and making it into land for a park.
Correct.
Um, but that's, that was sort of a, maybe gave me a moment of pause there to think about that. Is it really, is it really accurate to fit in? A ballot proposal among these other methods.
So there's a number of methods here. I've got them up on the screen that um, that um, deal with this. Um, and I he- I hear your point, Stephen. I uh, I think that's a fair question. Um.
Well, you know what? Those easements and conservation easements, I guess it's similar because it's taking land that could be used for other purposes and saying, all right, there's a way to. To make it as a, a natural area or a park. So. I with, I withdraw my question, I guess. I think it makes sense to me to include that or suggest that that be included as another way to acquire parkland.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, Alice, you got your hand up.
Yes, um, I, I get Steve's point. Um, I think um. There is one thing underlying the, the question of what, what is a way of acquiring property or way of designating property and so forth. It's, it is public land. Um, it's not, it doesn't show on the zoning map as public land, as far as I know. Um, but. Um. The distinction throughout the document, I think, often says dedicated parkland or something else, you know, parkland gener- generically. But we need to be clear about what's the differences between designating a, a public land or a park. And uh, having it zoned public land or having it used as a park. This is really arcane. Differences, but when, uh, I, I don't recall which section where they said a dedic- uh, a dedicated park rather than a designated park. We probably have already a dedicated park through the ballot ma- measure, but. We have not resolved the question as to whether to go through the process of designation. So I think the idea of maybe lumping it into uh, acquiring, but not necessarily designating or dedicating. That is probably a good idea. And, and I think Steve, now that Steve seems to be comfortable with it, I, I agree that we need to add that um. Language. Would you repeat the language that you were proposing? Um, Adam?
Yeah, so I think for this section, it would be under uh, section five, land use planning and acquisition. So I just changed the one word here. Um, uh, to clarify that it is run acquisition, uh, subsection five for the alternative methods, which is right. Um, right here. Um, and I just uh, recommending that uh, that there's some language included. That indicates acquisition of land for park use via ballot proposal. So basically, just.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Uh, Alan, uh, question on this section.
Yes, well, I have to uh, check out of this. I'm sorry. Basically, my, my reaction to this is they've completely omitted any recognition of proposal A. That this uh, that these public lands are established as a commons that has a unique form of organization. They do not recognize any of the civic center functions. They see this simply as in, in part of the park view, and there is more than that. How they fail to recognize that there is something new going on. It just feels like this is, that what has been done is, is canceled out. So I set out my particular critiques that this should be in the master plan. That there has to be relation with community organizations in the development of what goes on. That there are many functions that need to be seen as part of this development that operate over the next uh, time period. Yeah, that there's a request for proposals that in, that influences the next time period. All that is just canceled out of this and. I feel very disappointed. Most of what they're doing is, is uh, very excellent. But uh, this in terms of what we are dealing with in the center of the city is not so at all. So I hope you will take a look at the comments that I have made and incorporate them in some appropriate way. Yeah, but I'm sorry, I have another commitment that I just have to uh, attend to over. So. And the appreciation for what the effort is, I think that this requires a more critical view. While appreciating the good work that is done in terms of what we are dealing with. It completely omits the questions that we are struggling with. I'm sorry, I gotta go.
All right, Alan, you can always submit your comments uh, to parks as well. Uh.
Yeah, yeah, I, I submitted them as best I could to, to our group. I hope you will read them if. I will uh, elaborate them more as well. Thank you. Sorry to uh, miss out on the further discussion. Bye bye.
All right. Okay, um, Alice, uh, did you have anything else in this section or can I go to?
Well, just one quick general comment. This isn't a plan for the center of the city. This is a plan for the whole park system, open space uh, available, availability. I just wanted to mention that.
Fair. Um, and I did go just off camera so that my computer doesn't slow down here, by the way. Um, so uh. Uh, so section four, open space parks, development contributions within the urban core starts on page 66. Um, and so we'll get to that uh, area here. Um, so that's this section right here. Um, there is a number of uh, pieces here. That I thought were important to uh, highlight. Um, and uh, and so um, I, there are four recommendations, I think. Um, that I thought were, were uh, were important. So the first one is uh, dealing a lot with. Uh, the first paragraph and um, you know. I think that the, the uh, where we arrived at by the feedback was that this first paragraph uh, had some statements in it that. Probably conflicted um, with uh, multiple views of density um, and how to, to uh, have density. And so uh, there were some, some, almost like policy statements here. Um, and so we thought that this uh. The, the recommendation here is that there's consideration to significantly reword this first paragraph uh, or omit it. Um. Uh, and um, and because it does really engage in a, a um, argument that hits downtown density with open space. Um, and so we thought that was, that was um, that there are lots of examples that indicate that there can be uh, both. Uh, when done well. And so uh, we hi- highlighted a few of the communities we had looked at. Um, Detroit's probably a really great example of this because it is a major downtown uh, area and does have uh, open space uh, as well. So that was the, the first recommendation. Um, the second recommendation. Um, is around, there's a formula that's utilized uh, that we talked about in the, the start of the first page that really. Looks at the acreage per um, per park um, or acreage of parkland per area of the city. And compares it to um, population density. And so this uh, the second recommend- recommendation is a statement in the uh, pros plan that indicates that that. Formula should be altered specifically for the urban uh, central part of the city. And we thought that was probably not a good idea. To alter it just for one area. And it could um, lead to disenfranchisement of uh, residents who live in the urban core. Particularly since that's where a lot of the density um, it, that is uh, going into the city, at least currently is going uh, to. And that could shift with. Some of the TC1 changes that are being considered by council and planning. And uh, and so, you know, I think regardless of. Of uh, um, where in the city the density is going, the consideration for uh, parkland should be consistent. And so that's really what the second recommendation does is it says, please don't alter it um, based on the, based on the uh, area of the city that you're considering. Um, and uh, and for the record, the pros plan doesn't alter it. It just indicates that it should be. Um. And so we're commenting that maybe that's not a good idea. Um, the third recommendation, uh, there is a, a section of this uh, section of the pros plan that deals with just some examples of uh, spots. Of open space within the central portion of the city and uh, the diag is highlighted. And there were some other ones too that are highlighted as well. Um, and so we just wanted to note that the center of the city space uh, should also be included in that list of examples. Um, and then the final recommendation in this area is um, there's a, a section that talks about. Um, the uh, uh, way that private developers and the city can form relationships to have. Um, parkland be created as part of developments or, or um, or uh, you know, exchange or as part of development packages, if you will. And so, and that can apply to, to, you know, plazas and streetscapes as well and, and a variety of things. And so. Um, uh, there's, there's uh, upkeep details on here and for when they've contributed and when the DDA has contributed too. And we thought some greater detail on when that had happened would be helpful, uh, when and where. And so just sort of providing the readers a little more feedback. Uh, on that one. Um, and I'll keep going, just finish out this page and then I'll, I'll open up the questions here. Um, the next section is on the next page, 66. Um, and 67, this is this uh, area credit for private open space and recreation areas. Uh, this section talks uh, a lot about. Uh, developers uh, creating open space as part of the agreements, but uh, it talks about um, open space for private use and public use. And gets into a, a little bit of a uh, detailed breakdown on that. And we thought that um, some uh, indications around where those had happened. As well as which are private and which are public was probably something that would be good, at least on an example basis, uh, to, to indicate uh, where some of those things had happened. It doesn't really provide examples. It just illustrates the, the process. Um. And then uh, the next section is actually uh, o- over the court, I'll stop at this point because the next section is actually over the course of. Uh, several pages. It's the survey results um, that uh, of several survey questions that were asked. And so that's a section sort of in its own. Alice, you've got your hand up. Um, I'll see if there are any questions around up to this section five on page 66 to 67 before we. Go into the next area. You're muted, by the way, Alice.
Okay, um, uh, as you went down from the first four recommendations, um. The, the, it kept popping up along the way about the difference between private space, open space and, and uh, public. And uh, the diag is not technically public uh, space for Ann Arbor. And I know it's, may sound arcane. But it is, it is a fact that the University of Michigan doesn't have to contribute anything to our park system. Doesn't, doesn't have any pressure to, doesn't, no, it's, it's not really our public land. We can't zone it. They are a zone of their own. So I think using the diag as, as an example of public space available to the residents is a little bit shaky. Um, and uh, when you went on to how there are private spaces, um, this is a plan for public. Right, public um, parks and open space. And I don't know how private um, spaces can be counted. Um, as uh, public land and, and added to the inventory counted in things like acres per population. Um, if you want to go, my, my house, for instance, if I entertain people uh, from different places, that, that's not public. Uh, open space. My yard is, I have party on my driveway. That's not public space. But um. So I, but that's an exaggeration. It's just that diag doesn't count. Um, private tennis courts don't count and things like that. So I'm, I'm not, that's my opinion. Uh, but I think there is a, there is a basis for it in that um, when you don't have public control over a space, it really doesn't belong to the public for use.
That's fair. I, I will say it does not um, the, the area around private, uh, there's, you know, section five here deals with. Um, and acknowledges uh, um, you know, sort of the way that the Parks Department um. Counts or doesn't count the um, the private areas. And there are some.
Yeah, I do see that space, that sentence down there about it may not be counted, may not, sounds like it could be, but may not be. Um, but should not, would not, or is not, would, I'd rather have something definitive.
Okay. Um, and then in terms of the diag, just around that, um, you know, i- there is uh. The document does indicate, and I don't know the answer to this question, you know, as to if, if the diag is. I mean, the, the diag is open for public use unless the university, I suppose, were to shut that down. Um.
They can close their buildings. They can close their roads. They can close their driveways. You know, it's not under our control.
Okay. Um, we can, let Stephen, let's uh, let's uh, hear, hear your questions or, or comments and then we'll see if we alter this area.
So um, I guess a couple of points. I gave my feedback uh, to park staff about the whole pros document. And one of the areas that I had the most questions about was this one. Um, I frankly think that this whole section, right? The section five is about land use, planning and acquisition. And then this, this G is called parcels dedic- uh, donated through dedication for parkland within the city. And then almost all the stuff that it talks about, in my view, could be moved to part A, which is talking about sort of the guiding principles. Um, and when you get to the urban core po- point. It, I guess this, this whole section to me doesn't really fit within the topic, right? It's just kind of taking, hey, it's hard to get land in the middle of the city because it's expensive and. Blah, blah, blah. Um, which I don't, as a reader, I wasn't like somehow advancing my understanding of parkland acquisition. Which I don't, as a reader, I wasn't like somehow advancing my understanding of parkland acquisition. And everything else in the section G really seems to be going towards. The the criteria and the thinking around that the city employs when trying to decide whether and how to acquire. Parkland. So my comments to the Parks Department already are sort of. Inclusive of everything you've said, but kind of more. Maybe more dramatic. I think they could really overhaul this section, which leads to my second comment. Which is that I have some modest. Expectation around how much change will ultimately happen at this point in the pros plan drafting. Because I guess a couple of reasons. One is it's a document that is echoing. Prior documents and prior pros plans and they have a certain formula and rhythm and. It's difficult to take language that has been approved. And change it, especially since it's been through planning council, planning commission, parks commission and city council, the same language. Now multiple times. And so even though we could improve it, the likelihood that that. Change is even intended for the improvement of the document may not ultimately be embraced. And so I guess we'll see. Where where all this ends up. I think there is, I guess, to sum it up, I think there is room for improvement in that section. And if they don't take my complete overhaul, then I'd be happy if they took these these kind of comments as far as clarifying. What's meant in that particular section.
Excellent. Thank you. Alice, get your hand up again.
Yeah, just a short comment. I think Steve and I are kind of on the same track. I. I'd almost, if you can't change language that has been approved over and over again, then maybe you can leave it out. I mean, if there may be a different way, as Steve mentioned, to move it to a different section, which is less less prescriptive. Or less burdened with with incongruity. But that's that's my feeling about it. If you can't change it. Because it's always been done that way, then maybe. Delete most of it. At least the things that are not particularly coherent. With the purpose and the. Writing or. The principles.
Are folks comfortable with? With where we're at without making any changes to this document up to this point? Okay, I'm gonna take that as a yes.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. So we'll go into the next section. This is section four, planning process for the pros plan. It's pages seventy seven through eighty nine. And it's really, this is where a lot of the survey results come into play. And there are there are several survey questions. And I didn't, we didn't get into the 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 first couple of questions because they're. They don't, you know, they didn't, we didn't have feedback on them. They they don't touch on the center of the city. But starting with question three. Three and four do include pieces around downtown. Parks, including the center of the city. And then question four is it's described as an expansion of question three, but it's actually. It's actually a similar question without feedback. And so in in sec in question three. And then there are several other questions, by the way. The the demographic questions start at question twelve. And so through question ten or eleven, there's. There's, you know, policy considerations that are asked about. And so. So question three. Deals with. Support of park improvements using public tax dollars. And so just in this first section. We suggested some wording to clarify. That. That this first sentence support levels for thirteen park improvements. Based on tax, the use of public tax dollars was was the was something that was an important consideration, even though it's in the title. Starting off the paragraph was was important. Indicating that it is prioritization based on taxpayer dollar. Desired use. Second description. Deals with. Question three as well. And there are. There are. Here's the data on question three. There were three options for. For selection by participants in this survey. And, you know, you could see not sure, unsupportive and supportive. And the reality, I'm sure, is actually causing some. Discrepancies, because if you were to split the unsure fifty fifty. You end up with a scenario where some of these priorities would be changed. And the this section does highlight. In a summary. Both high levels of support and low levels of support. And then also highlights, doesn't highlight, but clearly if there's high and low, there's also a middle ground. And so the second recommendation deals with the fact that there is this unsure. Element that even if you split, it alters some of the statements. In the first, the first area. So that's that's the first one. Eric, I see your hand up here. I'll if it's okay, I'll go through. These these four or five four pieces and then get into your question here. The the second recommendation deals with, or sorry, the third recommendation, rather. Deals with the high level summaries on questions three, five, six, seven and eight. And there might be other ones, but those were certainly ones that that I noted. That there the data between the questions. Created some inconsistency. So not so much within the question itself. But but in some cases, there were some some things that were inconsistent from question to question. And and that was sort of expanded actually in this fourth recommendation, which deals with even potentially some. Conflicting information. So for instance, there were several. Several questions around the use in question or several pieces of the survey question and question three. The deal with the the spending of taxpayer dollars on. You know, for instance, playground areas or. Let's see here. River recreation facilities. This is one that really caught my eye. There's a later question, question eight or nine or ten or something like that. That's more open ended. It talks about things that people would like to see improved. And some of the pieces that rank low here are are highlighted in positive light. In the other questions as 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 having been feedback. From the community. And so this last recommendation is basically just that there are some. Sort of acknowledgement around the fact that there is some. That there is some. You know, conflicting feedback. In in the total series of survey questions. And 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 just sort of acknowledging that 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 is very real, frankly. And it does affect top priorities, middle upper priorities as well. And the questions are different, but there is overlapping. Conflict. And so I'll stop there. And Erica, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, I I think I would. Encourage not including that. I don't know if it's the second bullet point or the the one around the splitting of. Unsure sure into the two categories. That's just from my understanding of sort of survey analysis. That's not how. How a response like that might be interpreted. It's, you know, we don't know what respondents meant by unsure. They might mean a lot of different things. It doesn't mean that. You know, half were supportive and half, you know, they were leaning towards supportive, half were unsupportive. So I just think that's. I mean, it's it's important to note that there are perhaps high levels of. Folks respondents that are unsure about something and uncertain things, but I I think this is kind of. Odd language around splitting the supportive and non supportive.
Would you maybe maybe what we do is we note that there are varying levels of unsure.
Yeah, if that's not called out in the in the text, then that's probably an important. Element to to weigh in on, but you know, that's about it. I would I would suggest.
Now, I just to comment, there there are disagreeing opinions. So somehow it's good to kind of acknowledge that people may. No matter how they rank things, they may disagree on one thing or another.
Something like that, maybe might be more appropriate. Frank.
Yes. I've noticed early on. That on the question that specifically about the center of the city. If you were to remove the unsure responses. And you just had the for and against. They almost act identically mirror the percentage results of of the Prop A vote. And in a vote where you go to the poll, you don't you don't. Record people who are unsure. They just. So. I guess that's just an observation that if you do that. And I'm not suggesting necessarily we do, but it it's. Interesting that it's very close to the percentage. Of yes votes and no votes. If you just take the yes and no and eliminate the the unsure.
We'll keep going here then. So moving on to the to the next area, this is subsection D on page ninety five. One second here. Okay, so this is the downtown parks focus group. I'm almost positive this is a group that I participated in. I think Erica may have participated in it. I cannot remember how many, which meetings are what now, unfortunately. I think my mind has been zoomed to oblivion. But but there is a there's a piece here that just talks about the city of. Detroit, which is probably a statement that I I made some variation of. And I think just some clarity. Around the wording here is. Around how Detroit intentionally engages with users of all the parks, including those experiencing homelessness. To ensure that no one is pushed out is probably an important point. And and probably, you know, this was a zoom and I don't think it was recorded. So it was probably. You know, based on somebody's notes and I can see why why we ended up with the comment we did. I don't think there was any ill intent or anything. But I think if we can provide some clarity there, a little more formative would probably be good. And I think it would reflect. What we learned in Detroit. So subsection B. Page ninety eight, ninety nine is the next one. So. See here. So this is around our group, Center of the City Task Force and Council of the Commons. There's a a piece here that talks about the. Just just it's actually, I think it's language directly from. The designation for the Council of Commons. There's, I'm pretty sure this language is directly in our charge. And. So I think the suggestion here, it does include this piece around the relationship with PAC. Which is important and it's important that it it's sort of called out too. So. Sort of included a recommendation that the. PAC, the Parks Department staff and the Council of the Commons are working together to support. You know, recommendations for the area designated as the center of the city block, including all the alterations. Or use. Pieces. So that that was another piece there. On page one oh two. There is a, this is a section that that deals with goals and objectives. And this was put together, I am pretty sure by. By city staff looking at a variety of. Plans. And that come from a number of city documents. And so we thought a suggestion around. A park activation, not just urban park, but park activation in general, maintenance and planning. Including how to do so through the use of public and private partnerships. In order to reduce costs to taxpayers was something that might be a good, you know, suggestion to include. There is notes around the. The interest in engaging in public private partnerships or considering the engagement at a few points throughout the document. So. Think this goal would just support some of that other language that's already there. And then I'll keep going here, page one eighteen. Okay, so this this area is subsection F, neighborhood parks and urban plazas. And it talks about some feedback. There's a couple of recommendations that we had here. There was a sentence that says focusing resources on one urban park. Will just relocate issues to neighboring parks. And this is a section that that includes feedback, I believe, from. Some of the. Some of the survey work that's done. So I do think it's it's important that. That, you know, really not be altered, but we also thought that statement really could be misinterpreted in a negative light. And I, you know, we have and every conversation we've had. That has never been the intent and has been enumerated as as it not being the intent of. Any sort of development or use of spaces, including things like the activation of Liberty Plaza, you know, it's not designed to push people. Out of the space. And I think staff are doing a really yeoman's job to to prevent that from happening. So. That's an important. Piece that we thought would be good just to. Delete that sentence so that it was not misinterpreted as as that being part of what the city's intent is in pros plan. The second recommendation is just enumerating city advisory bodies such as the DDA, the Council of Commons. PAC and city staff in the planning and programming work. That is to be done in conjunction with the downtown park and open space subcommittee report. This downtown park and open space subcommittee report is a document that's referenced in the section. So we thought that including sort of the bodies that look at this, the downtown parks. As a reference to that document and then adding in the center of the city task force as a secondary document was probably a. A good additional suggestion to. And then there are several sections throughout the report, you know, clearly the the pros plan focuses on. You know, planning and and tax dollar allocation and. There are several parts parts that talk about city staff. And there's even a section that indicates that, you know, sort of a insufficient. Amount of staff support because there are not enough staff. And so maybe some acknowledgement that supports that statement. That that indicates that, you know, the Council of Commons is recognizes that the city is really tightly staffed. And the Parks Department in particular, and that we support a pros plan that ensures there's sufficient staff and resources. To build, activate and maintain a city park system that enhances and reflects vibrancy, diversity and uniqueness of the Ann Arbor community. And so something in there that sort of supports our city staff with. With the fact that, you know. People are are critical to actually moving these projects forward regardless of the project and. And we shouldn't expect that that this will just happen without resources and staff. So. So that is the that is the last page of recommendations. Any questions at all on our concerns around these sections?
Yeah, I I just like the. Yeah, I, um, I just like the uh, the comment about appreciation for staff. Um, now I've lost my train of thought, but it was that last paragraph. Let me kind of read it. Oh yeah, it doesn't uh comment about the volunteer programs there, but there at least two that I can think of. And I think they are listed elsewhere in the plan. I'm not sure. Maybe it's on the website that I'm thinking, but those, the acknowledgement of the contributions of volunteers would be a good thing to have right there with the appreciation for the staff too.
Well, that piece. Of volunteer. Community volunteers.
Thank you. It takes a village.
Yes, absolutely. Any other questions or comments on this last page of recommendations? Okay, all right. So um, you know, these are, we are uh, just a couple of days away from the end of the public comment um period uh, uh, around uh submitting public comments to uh, to the uh, uh, parks department. And the purpose of the meeting was to try and uh, just put a stamp of approval on some um, public comments to be submitted to parks uh as part of that process. Certainly any member of the community can submit personal remarks, but having something that came from this body was really the reason we were here and why we did this pre-work to, to bring these recommendations together. Um, so uh, kudos to everybody who submitted things, especially Rita, because she really worked hard at trying to do this uh, and uh be inclusive. And so um, I would just like to see if we could have a motion to support submitting this, uh, these recommendations as written here to uh, the parks department.
Move.
Second. All right, move by Frank, second by Alice. Um, all in favor of submitting, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
All right, uh, any opposed? Excellent. Okay, so, all right. And I apologize, we're not thirty minutes, but we're, we chugged along pretty good. Uh, so appreciate it.
Can I just give one remark, Adam, about the, as I understand the parks uh commission process and that we're not the only one looking at this, but we have a special meeting on January third, uh, hopefully to um, approve the, the sort of final version at the, at that point. So the sooner that any uh comments get in, uh, the better. And then what I'll do is I'll try to echo or push uh, that the, the, the comments from this body be incorporated or, or considered uh, in these last days as staff is pulling this all together. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, uh, we have a public comment, I think, is the next item on the agenda. Heather, could you see if there's any members of the public?
Yes, uh, Daniel, please go ahead. Daniel, you can go ahead and unmute yourself. Is it star six? Let's forget. It is star, yes. See, the star nine is star six.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
So the one point of clarification, um, uh, that I guess I would like is that uh, to me, the biggest issue in this entire plan is that the center of the city, aside from the Liberty Plaza, the center of the city is not actually a park. It's not in the parks inventory. So is it the position of the council of the commons that, that is their intent? And that moving forward, they're, they accept that that is their status, that they're not a park?
Uh, I'll go ahead.
Commenter identify themselves. I just, I don't know who we're listening to.
Yeah.
My name is Dan, Dan Rubenstein.
Yeah, yeah, Dan, thanks, thanks for that. I'll, I'll just answer this real quick. We have not taken a position on that. Um, so uh, it would be up for discussion at some point, but we have not, uh, we've not taken a position uh, around what the designation needs to be. And I think, just speaking for me personally, that is because we uh, we are uh, working towards what that plan looks like. And uh, the designation would, would come along with that. Now, that's my thought at least, but we have not ta, ta, taken that up. And so the, the answer to their question is we don't, uh, we don't have um, an opinion yet, uh, formed.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Adam, can I also add that there are several properties within the park system that are unique, as ours will be unique. And some of them are done differently or managed differently. So that's why we're, we're taking a measured approach to that.
Thank you, Alice. Uh, Rita, did you have a comment on that or?
Yeah, I, I um, I just want to say that I would like to know that the pros plan allows us the potential and doesn't put roadblocks in front of what we would like to do in terms of moving forward with making this an active public space. That's really a, a big um, driving force in terms of, of going through this document in detail to make sure that it opens doors instead of creates roadblocks. That's, that's what I hope. And I, I think that is related to what Dan said.
Thank you.
Well, can you, can, can I still be heard?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
I mean, the, the only roadblock I would, I would say is that I do think not being um, a park in the pros plan could make certain funding options more difficult in the future. So I do think there are some doors that are, if not closed, made more difficult uh, by the status. Uh, and, and, and I, and I would just add finally that um, for areas, other areas of the city that are not designated um, parks and are not in the parks inventory, let's and the main one I'm thinking about is the tree line and all the various parcels that might ultimately be affected by the tree line. Um, they are in the comprehensive plan in a different form. And I think one of the issues is, you know, i- if, if the center of the city, even though it's in the city charter called a park, if it's not in the pros plan, it's not in the parks inventory and it's not elsewhere in the comprehensive plan, any of the elements, where does that leave it? And especially in terms of applying for significant grant funding from, from grant doors. I don't have any particular ones in mind, but just in general. So anyway, that's, that's my comment.
Thanks, Daniel. Uh, Heather, any other members of the public?
Yes, Jeff. You can go ahead now.
Yeah, I'll just be very brief. First, I want to thank you all. This is, this is a very difficult task looking at a very comprehensive pros plan and for you to come up with a series of recommendations. And it, as this body agreeing to all this is fantastic. I would just add only one thing, and that is, in the process of this, there is a reference to a park advisory commission downtown parks subcommittee report without any direct link to that. If you have not read it, please, please, if you have not read this, please do read it. It contains a lot of very interesting information. And by the way, a lot more support for a park. The, the survey conducted in this, which is in two thousand thirteen, said that seventy-six percent of the people respondents of over sixteen hundred people were in favor of a downtown park. The other thing I would say is it's one thing to ask people if they in favor of a downtown park. It's another thing to ask if there are specific things you would like, like a fountain downtown or a seating downtown or a playground downtown. So how you draft the survey question is really important. That's all I needed, wanted to say, but thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other members of the public? Okay. All right.
None with hands raised.
Okay, excellent. In that case, uh, I will, uh, I will uh, make a PDF of this document and send it to Heather. Uh, and she can uh, include it in the minutes and uh, also will submit it to uh, the parks department. And Stephen, appreciate any of your lobbying efforts uh, in the process. And um, with that, we will uh, ask for motion to adjourn the meeting. All right, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Have a wonderful uh afternoon. Happy holidays. Enjoy your time off and we'll see you uh, next month. Thanks again.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good night.